Tonight, spending scandals at school boards.
People are done with these school trustees wasting money.
As the province considers axing trustees.
My initial reaction is one of grave concern.
Why it's sparking backlash. Also, strengthening security measures.
I'm hoping this is the ultimate solution in a defensive.
After a violent armed robbery.
You just want to do anything you can to try and delay them and slow them down.
How an Ancaster jewelry store is cracking down on criminals. And preparing the fleet.
They're ensuring that all the vehicles are ready.
As kids get set to head back to class.
Please just be mindful, you know, we're thinking about the safety of our future generations.
School bus safety for drivers and students.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here with us. Comments made by Premier Doug Ford back in the spotlight tonight. He says Ontarians are done with spending scandals at school boards. It comes as the Education Minister floats the idea of doing away with elected trustees. And during the premier's remarks yesterday, the Brant-Haldeman-Norfolk Catholic District School Board found itself in Ford's crosshairs. CTV Spencer Turkot has been following this for us. Spencer, Ford addressed a potential school board governance overhaul during an unrelated announcement near Calladen yesterday.
Well, he certainly didn't hold back when discussing multiple things, one of them being those Brant area trustees who he referred to as the bad ones because of that costly and controversial trip to Italy.
Well, there's some good and there's some bad ones.
Premier Doug Ford is referring to Ontario school boards on the province's proverbial naughty list. The Ministry of Education has been working to address ongoing cases of financial mismanagement.
People are done with these school trustees wasting money and they're done with a lot of these school boards.
One case in particular, a trip to Italy last year taken by four trustees from the Brant-Haldeman-Norfolk Catholic District School Board.
School board trustees decided it'd be a great idea to fly to Italy, spend a hundred and twenty some odd thousand dollars on their junket and their trip, have a great time in Italy, and say it's for Italian artwork, like, and bring back a hundred thousand dollars of Italian artwork.
In total, the trustees racked up a bill of nearly $190,000. They also splurged on luxury car rentals, high-end hotel stays, and fancy dinners. Education Minister Paul Colandra ordered a review of the school board and for the amounts owing for the trustees' travel expenses to be repaid fully within 30 days.
Last time I went to schools, it's the kids' paintings and everything else that are on the wall, not a hundred thousand dollars of Italian artwork.
Since then, Colandra appointed supervisors to take over and make decisions for some of Ontario's biggest school boards. In an email to CTV News, the minister's press secretary said the current school board governance structure is outdated and needs to be modernized, saying, "All options, including changes to governance and the role of elected trustees, are on the table."
My initial reaction is one of grave concern.
The recent comments have the President of the Canadian School Boards Association worried about the thought of getting rid of school board trustees. Alan Campbell says having an education system centralized at Queen's Park strips communities of their democratic voice and prevents schools from being responsive and representative of a community.
It's reckless and it's irresponsible. And so the message needs to be to Minister Colandra that he needs to deal away with this proposal. It's catastrophic.
Meanwhile, the premier is backing his Education Minister's crackdown on school boards.
We're going to make sure they balance their books. And I know Minister Colandra is doing a phenomenal job.
As for the trustees that went on that Italy trip, three of the four trustees paid what was owed by the end of May, and the school board and the province did not respond to a question about whether that fourth trustee fully settled the debts. Leanne.
Okay, Spencer, thanks for that. CTV's Spencer Turkot. Wet weather in Waterloo region for this Thursday in August. We'll go to CTV's Alexandra Pinto live in studio with us for a look at the forecast. Alex, just before the show started, we could hear the rain coming down hard here at the studio.
Yeah, I was almost afraid that we could probably pick it up on our mic and potentially it could, and who knows, it might even happen again throughout the hour. But yes, we are seeing some widespread activity right across southern and southwestern Ontario that seems to be making its way towards the east and now a little bit further north. So yes, we saw a downpour several times over our studio here in Kitchener. Right now, though, it just seems to be a bit of cloud cover, so a little bit on and off depending on where you are. Hopefully you didn't get stuck in the rain out there this afternoon or this evening. Temperature-wise, though, fairly cool, 17 it is right now here in Kitchener Waterloo, 16 if you are in the city of London, if you're in Godrich, 18, and it's also 17 in Mount Forest. And with the humidity that we are feeling, especially with those showers, it is slightly muggy out there. It's feeling just slightly warmer. But the good news, that sun is expected to make a return and just in time for the long weekends. We'll break that all down a little bit later in the hour. Leanne.
Okay, Alex, thanks very much. Now to the case of a man accused of using his vehicle as a weapon. An argument in a Toronto Tim Horton's parking lot escalated and ended with two pedestrians struck and a suspect charged with attempted murder. CTV Sean Lithong has more on what happened.
Tire tracks leading to a damaged fence, the location where a man is alleged to have attempted to run over another using his vehicle.
And there was a call for a collision and some sort of altercation there.
Toronto Police getting the call to a parking lot at Don Mills Road and Gateway Boulevard at 10:19 last night.
There was a massive scene there that there was a vehicle collision involved. There were people that were struck by the vehicle. And within minutes of arriving and doing their investigation, officers were able to place someone in custody.
Police saying there was an altercation between the two men where one man got into his car.
And the suspect, the person that was arrested, did drive their vehicle into the victim.
The man arrested, 33-year-old Edris Gulami, is facing charges of attempted murder, two counts of assault with a weapon, mischief over 5,000, dangerous operation of a motor vehicle, dangerous operation of a motor vehicle causing bodily harm, and uttering threats. A man in his twenties and another in his 50s were both injured. One serious but non-life threatening, the other man had injuries that were not serious.
But for someone to then get out of their car or get into their car and then to run over this person, I, it is alarming.
And this is not the first time the accused has been charged with attempted murder. Sources have confirmed to CTV News that back in February 2017, Edris Gulami was accused of firing a weapon nearly missing two children inside an apartment building. At the time, he was charged with four counts of attempted murder, possession of a weapon for committing an offense, careless use of a firearm, and possession of a firearm while prohibited. Court documents reveal that a psychiatric evaluation of Gulami was ordered in March of 2017, and he was found not criminally responsible in July of that same year. Court documents also revealed charges dating back to 2014 and 2015, where he was charged with assault with a weapon and aggravated assault and theft. Most recently, Gulami was also charged with assault in the fall of 2024. That case is still working its way through the justice system.
CTV Sean Lithong with that report. A violent armed robbery at an Ancaster jewelry store has prompted the business to step up its security measures. Ancaster Jewelers recently installed a smokescreen system which can flood the shop with a dense fog in an effort to deter criminals. CTV's Alexandra Holick shows us how it works.
In a matter of seconds, a thick fog floods this Ancaster Jewelry Store. It's a taste of what could happen in the event of an armed robbery.
If the hold-up button is pushed, they automatically disperse for 30 seconds with a non-toxic water vapor.
Owner Jean Pierre Verbunt installed the anti-theft measure after a violent smash-and-grab last December.
They did smash almost every case in the store. I spent the night in the hospital, got a CT scan, lots of damage to my face from hammers and punching.
The store's new system acts as smoke and mirrors, clouding criminals' vision and deterring them from finishing the job.
You can't see your hand in front of your face. So you can't steal what you can't see.
You just want to do anything you can to try and delay them and slow them down. It's not like we're trying to, you know, incapacitate them or something. We just want to give the police time to get here.
The owner here, Ancaster Jewelers, says he knows security systems won't put a stop to all armed robberies or guarantee it won't happen again. But he says he's hopeful the new measures will deter criminals from striking his store.
It's really to stop yourself from being the low-lying fruit and put yourself a little higher in the tree.
The device is often used in stores overseas, but since it came to Canada, it's billowed in popularity.
Jewelry stores, some higher-end retail, private residences, and then some retail applications where they're looking to protect specific assets.
The price for the added layer of protection starts at $1,500, but Verbunt says the smokescreen and security measures in general are worth every penny.
Show all the bad guys that we have this passive resistance that's going to hopefully stop you from even trying.
Alexandra Holick, CTV News, Ancaster.
Sogging Beach is here to stay. The Supreme Court of Canada will not hear an appeal of a decision that granted ownership of the beach to the Indigenous community. CTV Scott Miller has the details.
Now, some may not like it, but Sogging Beach is here to stay.
You're holding your breath for such a long time and it's like, once you get the noose, it's just like a fresh, like a breath of fresh air and less restriction.
The Supreme Court of Canada has dismissed a request from the town of South Bruce Peninsula to appeal the decision that granted a section of valuable shoreline in Sobel Beach to the Sogging First Nation. In April of 2023, the Ontario Court of Appeal granted the Sogging First Nation ownership of about two and a half kilometers of sandy beach stretching from Sobel Beach's Main Street north to Sixth Street. The case was first brought before the courts 35 years ago, but it was nearly a century ago when Indigenous leaders claimed an 1854 treaty deeded ownership of the disputed shoreline to them.
That's how resilient and patient our people have been to feel finally heard and seen and validated.
Denying the leave to appeal means the town of South Bruce Peninsula and a small collection of private landowners have seemingly exhausted all legal avenues to retain ownership of the beach. That was controversially renamed Sogging Beach by the Sogging First Nation on Canada Day.
It kind of grooms society, it kind of grooms community, it kind of grooms children when you have a colonial name that's supposed to be the Indigenous people of that land's land and beach.
Contacted by CTV News today, South Bruce Peninsula representatives said they wouldn't have anything to say about the Supreme Court's decision until after their next council meeting on September the 2nd. Richie says now the legal wrangling over who owns Sogging Beach appears to be done. Compensation from the federal government for breaking the 1854 treaty can be discussed. He hopes that can be resolved outside of court. As far as the beach goes, Richie says Sogging Beach will continue to be a tourist destination open to the public, attracting millions of visitors each summer.
Now, we all have an obligation, a duty to protect this land and this water and making sure that it's still here for future generations.
For those confused, Richie says Sobel Beach remains the name of the popular beachside town which is still owned and operated by the town of South Bruce Peninsula, but the beach will be called Sogging Beach now that it is in Sogging First Nation control. In Sobel Beach, Scott Miller, CTV News.
A reminder to start your day in the know with our CTV News Kitchener newsletter. Get the best local content from CTV News straight to your inbox. We've got today's top stories, Alex's weather forecast, and must-see videos all in one place. Sign up now, ctvnewskitchener.ca. And Stella Head, preparing the fleet. As kids get set to head back to class, CTV's Ashley Bacon will get school bus safety tips for drivers and students coming up.
Some isolated showers for some, but that is expected to clear as we look ahead to the later evening. I'll take a look at when that sun could return in your full forecast coming up.
Download the CTV News app and stay on top of local stories as they unfold.
We go to a dramatic scene unfolding.
Customize your feed and watch live wherever you are. ctvkitchener.ca, your home for news.
The back-to-school countdown is on with most students headed back to the classroom next week. And as CTV's Ashley Bacon tells us, one local school bus operator is working to ensure its fleet is ready for Waterloo region's young passengers.
Preparing the fleet for the back-to-school season.
We're also so excited to get back to our kids and know that we're providing an amazing service to the community.
School buses hitting the roads from this Kitchener depot to practice and prepare.
They're ensuring that all the vehicles are ready. They're ensuring that the pre-trip inspections are complete. They're being, becoming familiar with their routes so that we're ready for next week.
Autumn washer is a bus driver and says there are important safety features everyone should know about.
We have amber lights or yellow lights, and then we have red lights. So the yellow lights are giving you a warning that we're going to be slowing down and coming to a stop. And then there will be children exiting the bus or entering the bus. And then the reds come on when we have opened the door and our stop sign comes out letting you know, please stop and give some space behind and in front of the bus so children can get where they're going.
For drivers, a steep fine with the potential for jail time if they pass a school bus with flashing red lights. For the first offense, a minimum fine of $400 to a maximum of $2,006 demerit points. For a second offense, within five years, a minimum $1,000 fine with a maximum $4,000, six demerit points, and you could face up to six months jail time. Your insurance premium could also increase after a conviction.
Any bus manufactured from November 1st, 2027 will be required to have a perimeter video system attached to the stop sign arm which will detect drivers who don't stop when the lights are activated. But for the team at Transdev who operate buses throughout Waterloo region, the message is clear. Please just be mindful, you know, we're thinking about the safety of our future generations.
Ashley Bacon, CTV News, Kitchener.
Some highly skilled farmers from across Canada are competing in a precision matchup in southern Ontario this week. They're trying to create the perfect furrow. Here's CTV's Scott Miller.
The art of turning a proper furrow is on display in farmers' fields near Ayton this week as the best plowmen in Canada take part in our national plowing championships.
It's nice to see the tradition carry on. I mean, this is the top in Canada to see and the opportunity to go to the Worlds. I went to the Worlds back in 2017. It's a great opportunity.
A select group of predominantly farmers are trying to keep their fields straight and their furrows clean and precise as judges watch on.
We want the furrows even, well-packed. We want all the grass and sod buried. We don't want sticks or straw sticking up or greens sticking up. And we want nice ins and outs that we can finish the field with, just plow them in nicely.
Plowing has been around for thousands of years, starting with an ox and stick. Its purpose is to simply turn the soil over to create a new fresh bed to seed. It is used less and less in modern agriculture, though, as no-till farming and other advancements decrease the use of turning a furrow.
Yeah, it is going away on farms. Lots of farms still do. It's, you know, it's just one tool that we can use to grow good crops. But certainly keeping the art of it and the skill and the quality, it's just, it's nice to see it carry on.
No one is happier to see it carry on than Bert Byance, who has come all the way from Strathroy to watch the Canadian Plowing Championships. He has plowed for Canada at eight World Championships. He started turning furrows at the ripe age of seven.
People play hockey, play baseball, and we do the plowing. So that's basically it is. But if you want to make money, maybe baseball or hockey pays better.
Turning the best furrow here is a lot more than just bragging rights. The winners and those that qualify will represent Canada at the World Plowing Championships taking place next month in Europe.
It's just one thing like we can celebrate in agriculture, right? And kind of farmers can come together and appreciate the sport.
Near Ayton, Scott Miller, CTV News.
Live look outside over Waterloo this hour. We are seeing some wet weather depending on where exactly you're joining us from. But regardless, it is gloomy, gray, and dreary on this Thursday evening. Alex will tell us how the long weekend is looking coming up in the full forecast also ahead. Russia unleashing a massive drone and missile attack on Kyiv overnight, killing at least 19 people and injuring dozens of others. And later, keep your head up, the sky-high tradition returns on the last weekend of summer vacation. Canada's longest-running airshow takes flight above the sea.
When you see it happen, send it to CTV News. Text 10400. From your screen to ours. Text 10400.
Okay, earlier in the week when we saw that rain, I told you how I got caught out in it. Well, today, did not get caught in the rain.
Didn't get caught in the rain.
Success.
I did slightly.
Did you?
Yes, going out on break maybe a little bit, but I had my rain jacket today, I had my waterproof shoes, and we had an umbrella when we stepped out too.
Yeah, you definitely needed it because it really wasn't letting up. I found even when it was, we were getting a little bit of a break from it, it was still quite misty, damp, wet conditions.
You just didn't know when it was going to hit you next. And we thought it was pretty much over. And then right before the show, like we said, downpour right outside of our studio here. And it was loud. We could really hear it coming down. But that's how it is for us here in Kitchener Waterloo. But as we take a live look from Paris, where the fair, Fall Fairs are officially getting underway, okay, I think we maybe want to be there right now. But nice blue skies, some cloud cover. That said, that system that we did see pass us over here in Kitchener potentially could be heading toward Paris. So they might be getting it in about an hour or so, potentially. But even still, when we look at those cloud covers, especially below, it's still quite dark, a little bit ominous in some areas too. So we're not necessarily out in the clear yet. So yeah, definitely, once we get into the later back-half portion of the evening and then looking ahead to tomorrow, and of course, the long weekend where some sunshine will be in store, we'll get into that in just a moment. But this is the system that made its way right across southern and southwestern Ontario. It is making its way more towards the east. And now it seems to be going a little bit further north as it makes its way through Peterborough. So Hamilton, Brantford, potentially when we get to the 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock hour after that, that's when it should hopefully pass. And then we should be in for a little bit of clear. If you're just north of Sarnia, potentially some scattered shower activity could still be in play when we get into the rest of the evening. But looking at your Friday, it looks like it's going to be some cloud cover for many of us. I know here in Kitchener Waterloo, we're looking at about a 30% chance of shower activity at this point. But then getting into your Saturday, potentially just a couple pop-up showers expected, but then that's when we could see the sun make a return. So some good news if you have some outdoor plans for your long weekend. Noticeably cooler it is out there, though. 17 for us here in Kitchener Waterloo, also 17 if you are in Hamilton, 18 in the city of London. And I do want to kind of compare it with the humidex that we're seeing because when we are seeing, you know, shower system or if you're outside stuck in the rain, you're going to feel a little bit of that humidity, of course. So it feels more like 21 here in KW, feeling more like 20 in Godrich, and 17 if you are in Mount Forest. We did hit our high around 1 o'clock or so this afternoon, so 18 degrees, so definitely below normal for this time of year. Slightly cooler than where we should be setting at, but a record high, 36 degrees. That was back in 1948. And on this day in 1982, we saw an overnight record low of just 2 degrees. So we are definitely noticing, even with our overnight low of 6, that is expected for tonight, we are now in that single-digit territory, at least for the next few overnights. And that sun setting at 8:05 PM, which is so hard to believe. Yes, the summer, we are feeling it coming to and end slowly. So partly cloudy conditions as we get into the overnight. Again, that 30% chance of showers expected for us tonight. And then tomorrow, 18 degrees again expected, partly cloudy, chance of showers, just a 30% we're seeing for the afternoon. So just the back half of the day at this point. But once potentially we get to see those clouds leave us, that's when that sun, those skies are going to open up. Sunny conditions expected for Waterloo region, your Saturday, Sunday, even your Monday. Beautiful conditions at this point in store for your long weekend and pretty comfortable conditions as well. For Lampton, Kenton, Essex, 30% chance of showers we're seeing for you for tomorrow with a high of 20 expected. But then you've got several days of beautiful, beautiful sunshine in store. So hopefully Mother Nature doesn't change her mind and that stays that way for you. And again, fairly comfortable conditions even for you, Southern Georgian Bay, high of 21 expected, sunny conditions for your Saturday, and a high of 23 for your Sunday. And here is tonight's weather. Watch your picture. This shot was sent to us from Carol in New Dundee today, who has taken the shot this morning by the water. And before, of course, that rain rolled in, and you can look really close on the left, at least the left for us, Leanne. You can kind of start to see a little bit of the leaves changing color as well, which is, yeah, again, a sure sign that that summer is coming to a bit of an end for me. I don't think I'm ready for the leaves to necessarily be changing. But Carol says that she calls this sunrise serenity, and it is very peaceful, nice, calm water. Thank you so much for sending this and being tonight's weather watcher picture. But yes, I'm sure over the next several weeks, and as we get into fall, and hey, I do love fall, we're going to get to enjoy some nicer colors.
That was the first thing I noticed in that photo was the leaves are changing color. Oh, no. But warm fall. We're here for that.
We are here for that.
All right, Alex, thanks.
Thanks.
It is one of the biggest and deadliest attacks on Ukraine since the Russian invasion. More than 600 missiles and drones raining down damage and death in Kyiv. At least 19 people are dead, including children. Canadian officials accuse Russian President Vladimir Putin of deliberately targeting civilians. As CTV's Rachel Aiello reports, the escalation comes at a time when peace talks were supposed to be happening.
Multiple body bags pulled from this smoldering residential building in Kyiv after Russia launched a massive air attack on the capital. Dozens of buildings were hit or damaged by debris. Russia claimed the strikes were targeting Ukraine's military-industrial complex, but the death toll expected to climb already includes four children.
The Ukrainians are holding very hard, and so the Russians are pounding. They're not willing to negotiate yet.
The attack, the first targeting the city center since the Alaska summit, raising new questions about where US President Donald Trump's peace talks stand.
He was not happy about this news, but he was also not surprised.
The European Union and United Kingdom are summoning Russia's envoys after strikes damaged their diplomatic offices in the capital.
We are keeping maximum pressure on Russia.
The Canadian Embassy was not hit. Foreign Affairs confirming all staff are safe. But that didn't deter Prime Minister Mark Carney from blasting Russia in a lengthy statement. "By murdering when he should be talking, Putin demonstrates in the most horrific manner that his mission to subsume the Ukrainian people under his tyranny continues," Carney said in part. "The Prime Minister was just in Kyiv, where he vowed Canada's aid contributions could expand in the event of a ceasefire."
And I would not exclude the presence of troops.
Ukrainian President Vladimir Zelensky has been working the phones with top world leaders in the aftermath of the attack, thanking them for their support and pressing for tough new sanctions on Russia. Rachel Aiello, CTV News, Ottawa.
Sobering findings about abuse and assault in sports. Stella Head on CTV News, the new report detailing the dire warnings about the state of organized sports in Canada.
This is your CTV Kitchener, our community calendar. The Waterloo Region Walk for Parkinson's takes place on September 6th. You can take part as an individual or team and help raise funds to support families dealing with Parkinson's. We'll see you next time on Our Community.
Shock and sadness in the Windsor area community of Amersburg tonight. The Crown Royal Plant, once the lifeblood of the community, is closing in the new year and moving the bottling operation to the US. It means a loss of 160 jobs. The union representing workers at the plant say they won't let it close without a fight. CTV's Sanjay Maru reports.
Diageo is not just Amersburg's largest employer. It represents far more to this shoreline town of about 25,000.
You have generations of families that have worked there. Amersburg's wrapped their arms around that facility.
Inside Cruise Bottle and Package Crown Royal, filling, capping, and case packing before finished cases ship to distributors in Canada and the US. Come February, the doors are closing on this nearly 100-year-old facility, putting 160 people out of a job.
To be quite frank with you, I was pissed off. I made it clear to the company that they have a fight on their hands. Because it was basically reading me a letter with no details, just saying it was a business decision.
In a statement, the company says it's part of a plan to streamline its North American supply chain, shifting some bottling closer to US consumers while Crown Royal's mashing, distilling, and aging remain in Canada. For this community, the shutdown raises difficult questions about what Amersburg looks like without its largest employer.
I've asked the CAO and the treasurer to look at the economic impact that is going to have on Amersburg.
Amersburg Mayor Michael Prue says he plans on reaching out to invest Windsor Essex to see if anyone would be interested in taking over this massive facility.
Without the jobs, we become a bedroom community, and I, as mayor, do not want that. We're trying to increase our commercial industrial base. We've been very successful in the last year. This is a major blow.
Diageo says Crown Royal Whiskey destined for Canada and non-US export markets will continue to be bottled in Canada but at the company's facility in Valleyfield, Quebec. As for the union, officials say they are coordinating efforts with Unifor leadership to develop a strategy to to develop a strategy to try and keep the plant open. Sanjay Maru, CTV News.
A decision to close many of Ontario's beer stores this fall has presented consumers with a unique problem. Sure, brew will be available in supermarkets and convenience stores, but what to do with the empties now? CTV's Heather Wright reports.
Last year, more than 1.6 billion empties were returned to Ontario beer stores, according to the retailer.
It's 33 bucks here.
But with more than 100 locations either shuttered or slated to close by the end of the year, some fear the program won't survive.
Where were those people going to get their money back? You're not going to drive an hour to a beer store.
Most provinces have some sort of deposit return program, whether it's through retailers or purpose-built depots. In Ontario, the program has been run by the beer store for decades, a retailer owned by international brewing companies that once had a monopoly on beer sales in the province. The Ford government canceled that contract, allowing for beer and wine to be sold in grocery and convenience stores, paying a $225 million penalty to end it early.
There is more points of sale to buy it, but what's going to happen with the recycling and the empties?
At this point, it's unclear. According to the province, grocery stores that sell alcohol must begin accepting empties and providing refunds on January 1. But now some grocers, including Loblaw's Metro and Sobies, are rethinking selling booze. Retail settings are not designed to accommodate bulk returns of alcohol containers, the Retail Council of Canada said in a statement. Given the cost and operational complexities of managing alcohol returns, some retailers are reassessing whether it remains viable to continue selling alcohol. The union representing beer store workers expects more closures next year, a hit to recycling efforts and to those who rely on empties to make ends meet.
This is really helpful for us.
The province says the beer store will continue to operate the deposit and return program until 2031. But with more and more stores like this one closing, it's not clear if consumers will go out of their way to return their empties. Heather Wright, CTV News, Toronto. Okay, let's update our top stories with CTV's Colton Wiens, live in studio with us. First, Colton, the latest on the premier's comments regarding school boards.
Yeah, that's right, Leanne. Premier Doug Ford says Ontarians are done with spending scandals at school boards. Ford called out the trustees at the Brant-Haldeman Norfolk Catholic District School Board as some of the bad ones, while promising to crack down on school boards. The education minister's press secretary tells CTV News, the current school board governance structure is outdated and needs to be modernized. The Canadian School Boards Association says it's worried about the thought of a centralized education system at Queen's Park. Also, a violent armed robbery at an Ancaster jewelry store has prompted the business to step up its security measures. Ancaster Jewelers recently installing a new smoke screen system that floods the shop with a dense fog, all in an effort to deter criminals.
Okay, and online, Colton, of course, it is the long weekend this weekend, and our digital team has a story up about some road closures in Waterloo this weekend.
Yeah, that's right. It's an exciting weekend in Waterloo. It's move-in weekend for university students. Students begin moving in tomorrow through Sunday. The city will be limiting parking or closing some streets for move-in traffic only. For more information on this story, you can scan the QR code on the bottom left of your screen to get the story on our CTV News app or to download the app right now. You can also visit our website, ctvenewskitchener.ca. Leanne.
Okay, certainly something to be aware of this weekend. Colton, thanks for that. We got a snapshot today of the state of sport in Canada, and it is, in a word, disturbing. The Takeaway from the Future of Sport Commission preliminary report, abuse, harassment, and discrimination are widespread and ongoing in a culture of silence. CTV's Andrew Johnson has more on the findings and recommendations for change.
They traveled the country for a year, speaking to hundreds of athletes, administrators, coaches, and parents. The consensus, clear.
The Canadian sports system is in crisis. As many have told us, it is broken.
The Future of Sport in Canada Commission found evidence of widespread abuse and mistreatment at all levels. A lack of protection for children and Olympians alike left vulnerable.
Physical punishment, sexual assault, training while injured, humiliation, intimidation, isolation tactics, failures to provide medical care, discrimination, and exploitation.
The commission also found, in a win-at-all-costs culture of silence, when an athlete musters up the courage to come forward, they often run into a brick wall.
Lost in the web of various complaints mechanism, resulting in many feeling helpless and abandoned.
The commission is making 71 recommendations for change. It suggests the creation of a unified national safe sport tribunal to eliminate the patchwork between local, provincial, and federally regulated organizations and enforce legislation at all levels. Federal funding being made conditional on compliance, background checks, and a nationwide public registry to flag wrongdoers and restrict access. Survivors of abuse, like gymnast Amelia Klein, say with the release of this report, their horrible experiences are finally being validated.
To have them influence what we hope is going to be meaningful change in the system is, there are hardly words to actually describe what that feels like.
She says the ball is now in Ottawa's court to act. These are only recommendations that, after another round of feedback, will then be presented to government. Andrew Johnson, CTV News, Vancouver.
Celebrating a community tradition, the Paris Fair is back for the 167th edition of the event. The Labor Day Classic kicking off tonight. That is where we find CTV's Karis Map tonight. Karis, we're seeing rain in Waterloo, but it looks like you are seeing plenty of sunshine there at the fairgrounds.
That's absolutely right, Leanne. Right now, bit of a weird weather situation, as in front of me, there is that sunshine and clear skies. And behind me, as you can see, there are that, those looming kind of darker clouds. But people tell me, and they're filing in by the masses, people are coming in, they're not really worried about the rain. They tell me they don't plan to let the potential for rain put a damper on tonight's festivities. Now, yesterday actually was the opening, first day of the fair, but official opening ceremonies will be taking place this evening shortly at 7. Tonight's events will also see the ambassador competition and monster truck madness. There are some heavy cloud coverage, as I said, right now, but many people have told me again that it won't be putting a damper on this evening's fun.
Honestly, I think it just adds to it. It's a little bit more fun. Who doesn't like playing in the rain, right?
Absolutely not. The rides are super slight, and I don't really care about the clouds.
Like, we came prepared, rain jackets, everything. We're good.
We got an umbrella in my bag. We're ready.
We're ready to go.
Doesn't change anything. We're still positive.
The monster trucks are set to hit the track this evening at 9 o'clock, with the fair continuing over the weekend and wrapping up on holiday Monday. Leanne.
Karis, don't forget, you have to work tonight, so you do have to come back to the station eventually. You can't have all the fun out there, but it looks like a great time. Enjoy it while you can. Karis Map in Paris tonight. Stella Head on CTV News, it's the high school reunion we're all invited to. A new documentary about the iconic TV show, Degrassi High, is premiering at TIFF. We'll get a preview coming up.
Auditions for this new kids' show.
And then one day, my mom called me in.
If you've watched television at some point over the past 40 years, you probably came across the TV show, Degrassi. As CTV's Andrea Case tells us, the inspiration for a new documentary about, to screen at TIFF, came from an unexpected source.
There was a notice about auditions for this new kids' show.
And then one day, my mom called me and told me, you got the role. And I just grabbed my bag and left. And man, what a wild journey that started.
The new documentary, Degrassi: Whatever It Takes, would never have happened without Ivy Mudd.
I started Degrassi, and I'm like, why is there no documentary about this?
Do you always take your daughter's advice?
From now on, I will, clearly.
It is the longest-running and most successful franchise in TV history.
Two years ago, the then 13-year-old Ivy began watching Degrassi from the very beginning of its 385 episodes. She asked her TV and film producer mother that fateful question.
It was pretty clear that, you know, it, it sort of stands the test of time. So the question was, you know, what's the future of it? And why not celebrate something that's four decades old?
Ivy was captivated by the TV show about a group of kids in a Toronto school and their lives inside and outside the classroom.
I think everything still holds up. It talks about things like eating disorders, and I feel like people can relate all over the world.
Cast members were game to take part in the documentary, including perhaps its now most famous former student, Jimmy.
And all these people.
AKA Aubrey Graham, AKA Drake. Mudd had to get the blessing of show creator Linda Skyler, which was easier than she thought.
We had lunch. We sort of poured our hearts out. And, and I don't think that she had any expectations. Like, she was very hands-off.
As for getting accepted into the Toronto International Film Festival.
I've been around a while. This is my first TIFF, and it is, I mean, it's just, it's, it's incredible. And in our own town, in Toronto, with a franchise that, that is homegrown. It's a Toronto story, right? But our, arguably one of our biggest cultural exports. So it's super, it's, yeah, it's amazing to be here.
Degrassi: Whatever It Takes will have its world premiere on September 13 at 6:15 at Scotiabank Theatre.
Do you have your outfit picked out for the red carpet?
Not yet, but it has to be amazing.
Andrea Case, CTV News.
Very cool. Can't wait to see it. All right, more news ahead. First, let's check in with Alex. A rainy afternoon and evening for some people, as we're still seeing a few isolated showers make its way towards the east and a little bit further north. But we'll take a look at how your morning is looking as we officially kick off the long weekend in your wake-up weather coming up.
It's Jeff KP and Backstage Ben in the Morning.
Three awesome people that want to start your day or finish your overnight shift.
You'll laugh, you'll text, you'll call, you'll scratch your head, and maybe even be Backstage Ben. Weekday mornings from 5:30 to 10.
Listen live on the iHeartRadio app or at 1053 Virgin Radio.
Okay, let's check back in with Colton for a look at what we are following tonight. Colton.
Well, Leanne, more from the Paris Fall Fair tonight. Karis is in Paris, and despite the rainfall, the fun is still going. Midways are now open with lots of rides and games to try out, and opening ceremonies are just about to get underway. Plus, some competitions are on tap this evening, and monster trucks are set to take over the fairgrounds. We'll have all the sights and sounds tonight at 11:30. Leanne.
Okay, Colton, thanks very much. Karis in Paris. It has a ring to it.
I say that 10 times. And I know Colton's very excited about the monster trucks because that's all he's been talking about this afternoon.
Yeah, exactly. Hey, you know what? Good weather for it. Colton, maybe you should head out to the Paris Fall Fair.
Yeah, maybe we'll find him there. But yeah.
Great weather for it, though.
Yes, not too bad. But yeah, we were noticing a few dark clouds, potentially a little bit of wet weather could be left for, for Paris. But clearly, from what we saw.
They're so lucky.
People were all prepared. So, hey, good on them. But when we look at tomorrow morning, slightly cool start, 9 degrees, mainly clear, though, for 6 a.m. Then we should see some mainly sunny sky from 8 to 10. We should be hitting around 13 degrees or so. So cooler, but getting comfortable.
Yeah, and some sunshine. We'd like to see that after this rain we saw in Waterloo.
Exactly.
Okay, finally, for us tonight, countless eyes will be glued to the skies around Toronto this weekend. The Canadian International Airshow is back for another year.
The Canadian snowbirds are always a star attraction, and today you may have spotted them practicing this afternoon if you happen to be in the area. CTV's Corey Baird has a preview.
The unmistakable roar of the CF-18 fighter jet means another installment of the Canadian International Airshow is upon us. Fresh off a successful test flight, Captain Andrew Chen is excited to perform in front of a hometown crowd.
I've been doing this for over four years, and every time I strap in, it's a refreshed feeling. It's absolutely amazing when you take off.
The airshow, an end-of-summer ritual for this pair of 15-year-olds, who stood in the pouring rain for three hours just to get a sneak peek.
It's just exciting. It's exciting to watch, to see something that's both looking and getting military helicopter pilots. So just full watching. That's a dream.
They can look to Rory Harrison for inspiration. Five years ago, he watched the show from the ground. Now he pilots this search-and-rescue helicopter.
I was going to Seneca College in Toronto, and just before Orientation Week, we went down to the CNE, and the airshow was going during that weekend. And I saw the helicopters and the snowbirds, the F-18 demo team was there as well, and it was just a big inspiration to join the forces.
The CTV News chopper captured this footage of the famous Canadian Forces snowbirds, the closing act each day of the airshow, because, well, who's going to top the snowbirds?
I want to say no pressure, but we, we think about everybody that's out there watching, especially in Canada's biggest city. You know, there's going to be essentially millions of eyes on us this weekend.
More than 1 million people are expected to take in the sights and sounds from a variety of vantage points this holiday weekend.
There is great viewpoints all across the city, from kind of the Humber Bridge all the way over to Billy Bishop Airport. And it's nice because young families can go and experience the airshow without having spent a lot of money.
For those unable to see the show in person, it will be livestreamed free on the airshow's website. Corey Baird, CTV News, Toronto.
There you go, a long weekend activity. If you have no plans, you can head on down to maybe the CNE, do that, and check out the airshow.
Mm-hmm. And the airshow, yeah, like we saw, always such a big, big star of the CNE. But again, it's, you know, a sure sign that summer is officially, or unofficially, I guess, coming to an end.
I'm sad. I feel like this summer in particular went by so fast.
Blink of an eye.
I don't know where it went.
Still have some September to get through, and, you know, hopefully some, maybe we'll see a bit of a warm-up.
We're hoping for a warm-up before warmfall. I want a summer warm-up and then warmfall.
Yes, and then we'll get into sweater weather.
Yeah, exactly. All right, if you're taking off for a long weekend, take care. But we'll be back here tomorrow at 5, 6, and tonight at 11:30. Good night.
Take care.